Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. I'm Councilman Yitzhak Schleifer, and we will be hearing Bill 19-0451, Biennial Comprehensive Crime Reduction Plan. I'd like to thank my colleagues who are joining us today. Council President Scott, Vice Chair Burnett, Councilman Pinkett, Councilwoman Sneed, Councilwoman McCray, Councilman Cohn.
Please, Chair.
Also like to thank members of all the agencies that are here. Commissioner Harrison, Chief of Staff Eric, Solicitor Davis, Deputy Mayor Schnitzer, Matt Stegman, and Elena DePietro from Law, and Hillary Rulie from Law. I will open up and have the bill sponsor, Council President Scott, to speak on the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I stated earlier before the previous hearing, we know that violence and gun violence in Baltimore City is the most pressing issue facing our city. And in this very chamber, in the seat that you currently sit in for the past three years as the former Chair and former Vice Chair of the Public Safety Committee, I have pleaded, demanded, yelled, screamed, and asked for Baltimore's mayor to come up with a comprehensive crime reduction and prevention strategy for Baltimore City. We have yet to receive one. We've done it through resolution. We've done it through hearing oversight. We've done it through asking. We've done it through presenting a framework ourselves. Excuse me. And we still have not received it. We have people dying every day in the city of Baltimore. And we know, again, that we have to have our police department focus on the individuals committing that crime, making sure that there's a certainty that they will be caught and for punishment, making sure that we're dealing with the flow of guns into Baltimore City, and making sure that they're making it into the hands of people that it should not be making it into. But that's not the only response. That's solely not going to solve it. We have many city agencies, and every single city agency must work towards reducing violence in Baltimore City. Not now, but right now. We were told again on July the 18th that there will be a plan coming in the weeks to come. I don't know where you guys come from, but where I come from, July to November is not a few weeks, that's a few months. We know that this is the most pressing issue facing our city, and we need to see action now, but also build towards how we can prevent this in the future. We are facing a public health crisis in gun violence in Baltimore. So yes, our health department should be involved on how we're going to reduce violence in Baltimore and prevent crimes in Baltimore. We have a transportation issue in Baltimore, so yes, they play a part. Recreation and Parks, our school system obviously play a part. The Department of Employment and Development plays a part in reducing violence in Baltimore City. Every agency, every city worker must know that this is priority number one, and that can only come when there's a plan. And we know and understand, Mr. Chair, that there was concerns from the Law Department about the council's authority to direct the mayor's office on criminal justice, who we were told will be presenting the plan. And I have amendments today that would alleviate that concern by moving the coordination efforts to the Health Department and under the Health Commissioner, and also adding in that only the agencies that are responsible to the city of Baltimore will be required. The other agencies would simply be asked to participate. And then also adding in that another concern that was raised by the Law Department about conflicts and the Police Department of conflicts with the consent decree, that those assessments of policies, policing policies, will only start in this plan that will be presented after the completion of the consent decree. We know that we need this. We needed this three years ago. We needed this 10 years ago. We needed this 15 years ago. We can no longer simply look to policing. We need policing. There's no doubt about it. We need aggressive, focused, targeted, constitutional policing each and every day in Baltimore City. But we know that we have a much broader problem, and that every single agency, every taxpayer dollar should also be focused on reducing and preventing gun violence in Baltimore. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to ask someone to make a motion to move these amendments.
Do we have a motion to move the amendments?
No. Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
So the amendments are adopted.
So, we received the reports very late, and remember, Mr. Davis, this bill is not going to be voted on today. There will be a work session for this bill, and will we continue the conversation?
So, hold on, hold on. We'll get into, we're going to call on, we're going to call on the Law Department next, but we can't just be talking from anywhere, so.
You're out of order, Mr. Davis. You have to be recognizing, use the microphone.
Correct. Okay. Would you like to come to the microphone? Okay.
Lester Davis from the mayor's office. So, we were respectfully asked that if you have amendments that just came in at the 11th hour, that we'd get a chance to look at them, that the committee would do the respectful thing, let the Law Department take a look at them, and that you wouldn't move with such haste to approve amendments right now that nobody has seen and doesn't know what they actually are or do. So, I don't know. If you're saying that the committee's not going to vote, then there's no, there's no need to move the amendments right now.
Correct. So, we plan to have a robust conversation on this bill. Following this hearing, we intend to have a work session because there obviously are a lot of changes that need to be made. We're certainly willing and interested in working with every single agency to make sure that, you know, everyone's at the table, and we can have a robust conversation in a public forum with the public present, and we intend to do that. So, the bill will not be moving forward today. We will be scheduling a work session.
And will the amendments be held off into future work sessions when they can be debated and discussed?
The amendments already have passed, but we certainly are open to listening to each agency, and if there's further amendments that need to be made, we'll certainly consider those amendments.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, just again, for the general public, remember, remind that we have been asking for this and been told this is coming since July, and for us to, and this bill was submitted and a hearing was announced a long time ago, and we just received the bill reports. So, we have to make sure that we are moving at a pace that is not just when the administration wants us to move, but how we should move as a city. And we always try to be open for discussion, but I don't think that anyone in the city of Baltimore thinks that there shouldn't be a comprehensive crime strategy in Baltimore City today.
Thank you. And, all right, so we're going to start off with the agencies. If I can call on Solicitor Davis to start us off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members, Mr. President. I'll be very brief. The amendment just adopted dramatically changes the bill. So, the committee, of course, has the Law Department's evaluation of the unamended bill, so I won't spend any time commenting on that. But the truth of the matter is, I was just handed the amendment minutes before I came into the chamber, and the Law Department has not had an opportunity to evaluate the bill as amended. And of course, we will do so promptly and get a report to the committee just as soon as we can. That said, I'm going to offer basically just two comments, which are pretty apparent on the face of the amended bill. One is, of course, Commissioner of Health will need to be conferred with, obviously, and we will do that, I'm sure the committee will do that. It does not, it will not surprise any of us if the Commissioner, the Health Commissioner is quite taken aback by what this amended bill seems to put on her plate. But there'll be time enough for discussions about that. Second, I notice that the amendment, I think correctly, excludes from the six items described as contents for the comprehensive crime production, reduction plan called for by the bill. It excludes the item called "Assess Policing Practices," apparently for so long as the consent decree is under implementation. But I simply observed to the committee that Item 6 on that list is every bit as much implicated by the consent decree, and in many ways even more implicated by the consent decree, frankly, than Item 2. Item 6 reads, "Establish Goals, Priorities, and Standards for the Reduction of Crime and the Improvement of the Administration of Justice in the City." If you were to read that to Judge Bedar, who presides over our case, he would tell you, that's exactly what the consent decree is doing, exactly what the consent decree is doing. So, we will have an opinion for the committee on our assessment of the bill in due course, and we appreciate the committee's willingness to work with the Law Department to do what is necessary to improve the lives of people in Baltimore City. I'm happy to take any questions.
Sure. Mr. President?
Just one question, and thank you. And, Mr. Solicitor, you know that no one in City Hall supports the consent decree more than I do, but as you know, I've always said that we also have to make sure that we have policy that lasts longer than the consent decree. But also, can, I don't know if you can speak to why your last question or statement wasn't included in the bill report?
I'm sorry, why?
Like, it wasn't, the issues with the other item wasn't one of the things brought up in the bill report? Or did I miss that?
You mean, I think we made it pretty clear.
No, I know about the assessing, but then you said Item 2 is just as covered by the consent decree.
I don't think we called out Item 2 specifically, Mr. President.
No, I'm saying, yes, I agree, you didn't, but you just said that Item 2, you said that yourself. I was just asking why, did you know why that wasn't included if you feel it also is a consent decree?
Because we covered it by the other language that we used.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. No, we pointed out that to the extent the bill is attempting to, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm reminded, you got a separate report from the Police Department, apparently.
Yeah, I got this.
I'm talking about the Law Department.
Thank you.
We made it clear from our Law Department report that to the extent that the bill was attempting to, to take up space occupied by the public local law and the Police Commissioner, it was not going to be sufficient.
You and I know that portion of law very well.
Yes, you do. Happy to answer any other questions.
I'm done, Mr. Chair.
Colleagues, anybody have any questions? Vice Chair Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and this is just more of a statement on your comments about the Health Commissioner potentially pushing back on this. I've been working very closely with, and I'm not here to speak for the Health Department or the Health Commissioner, just to fully disclose that. But if you do recall, we just held a hearing last week on changing the focus of gun violence to that of a public health issue, and we have been very, working extremely closely with the Health Department on guiding that work and perspective moving forward. Obviously, I will have further conversation with Dr. Sarassus about what she's being asked for in doing this, but I would note, just both for my colleagues and the public, that I believe absolutely that that's a step in the right direction if we are actually going to address violence as a, in a comprehensive manner that is trauma-informed and focused on health outcomes and social determinants, the health that lead to gun violence in the first place. I do believe it is absolutely a significant step that this committee is making in reframing that conversation from that of policing and criminality to that of health and helping people move forward with their lives without committing crimes in the first place. So, I'll just put that on the record. You don't have to respond, but yeah, that's where I'm coming from on that one.
Great. Chair? It's not on, you got to come up to the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Matt Stegman from the mayor's office. Just to respond to Councilman Burnett's comments, I know that you made abundantly clear that we are going to have additional work sessions on this bill. I think it's just important for everybody to know that the way the Health Department found out about the proposed amendments was, we called them when we walked into this hearing tonight. So, again, I think that it is fair to say they may be taken aback when they have a chance to assess what impact that might have on their agency and their operations. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not certain if this is a question or more of a statement. It just seems to me ridiculous that in a city that consistently has over 300 murders and hundreds of shootings, that we're here and adhering, have to do gymnastics and backflips just to get a comprehensive crime reduction plan. This is crazy. Our focus should be on the crime fight, and we can't even get to a resolution of working together to get a plan. So, I guess that's not a question, but it's a sad statement.
Thank you. I'd like to call up next Deputy Chief of Staff Schnitzer.
Good evening, Deputy Chief of Staff for Public Safety in the Mayor's Office, Sunny Schnitzer. First of all, thank you all so much for allowing me to come up and speak. I also will be somewhat brief. So, first, I wanted to acknowledge, you know, each of the agencies whom this bill was referred have submitted reports to the council. A common thread that we hope that you all will see, and it's something that is an expectation of the administration, is that every single agency, every person in this room, every person in city government should be making public safety their top priority. We see how they're currently collaborating, and we stand ready to continue to build on that collaboration, to make sure that we continue to move in that direction. You know, I do want to highlight, I completely agree with the Council President's point, we're not going to police our way out of this problem. That being said, this summer, as the Council President mentioned, we, the city did release a comprehensive crime plan. And each of our agencies, including the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, for example, are aligning their work under that framework. That framework that focuses on prevention, intervention, enforcement, rehabilitation, and reentry. You know, we really, you know, welcome the opportunity for a further work session on this, to talk more extensively about it. You know, I think the amendments this evening kind of threw us all a little bit for a loop. We do need to have some conversations about operationally, you know, how this would impact the Health Department. That being said, as I mentioned, we welcome the opportunity to continue to have this conversation, and the Police Commissioner is here this evening and is happy to respond to any questions or comments regarding the city's crime plan. But I do want to reiterate, we do have a comprehensive crime plan that was released this July, and that is the plan that the Commissioner and Mary Young released.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. President?
Thank you, Madam Deputy, and thank you for all your hard work. But I would have to say that while, as you know, I support the plan that the Police Commissioner put out, I think it's very comprehensive from a policing standpoint, but it is not a complete comprehensive plan for every agency in Baltimore City. In fact, let me be clear, it's not his job to tell the Health Commissioner how the Health Commissioner should help to reduce violence, or the Department of Public Works Director or Recreation and Parks. He has one job and one job only. Well, he has two. Reform a police department and get them into the crime fight to do that, and do that in a constitutional way. That's what his jobs are. And in fact, we remind again that it was your boss, the mayor of Baltimore, that said on that same day that the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice would be presenting in the weeks to come a comprehensive crime strategy. So, I feel like this is déjà vu, actually. My first question to you is, where is that? Where is the comprehensive strategy from the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice? Or will that never exist until we pass the legislation?
So, the comprehensive crime plan is the plan that was released by the mayor and Police Commissioner this past July. Now, as I mentioned earlier, each of those agencies, it is our expectation, and we hold those agencies accountable through City Stat, through various different mechanisms, to align our strategy with that. You know, one piece I do want to highlight, because I think this may be where some of the confusion is coming in. So, the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice quarterly submits metrics on that comprehensive crime plan to the Governor's Office. So, you know, we would be happy to come and brief the council as we work on those metrics, release those to the committee, and obviously come have a conversation about that. I'm not sure if that's, you know, that may be where that is, but the comprehensive crime plan released this summer is the plan of the administration.
So, thank you, and respectfully, I'm going to have to take that as a no. It doesn't exist, and it's not going to exist. Because I've read that plan over many times. I don't see in that plan where it says the Baltimore Health City Health Department will focus on these efforts to reduce gun violence and violence in Baltimore. I don't see where it says the Housing Department will do these things to reduce violence in Baltimore, they're going to focus on lead paint, or we're going to look at a more, a more robust model of using interrupters, violence interrupters. Again, let me be clear, I support what the Police Commissioner put out. I think, as you know, anyone in this room knows, many of the things that he put into that plan, in that chair, had been screaming about for years, so I'm glad that someone finally came here to do that. But it still falls short of what we need. So, can you tell me, for example, in your comprehensive crime plan, what are the goals and metrics for the Baltimore City Health Department, and how they're going to work to reduce violence in Baltimore? What are the metrics for Recreation and Parks? What are the metrics for the Department of Public Works, the Department of Housing, if there already is a comprehensive plan?
So, there are not explicit metrics associated with those agencies in the plan. What I would point to there again is kind of those five steps. And what I would say is universally, across the board, gun violence prevention, as this committee knows, it doesn't happen within, there's kind of that middle bucket of enforcement that everyone tends to think about. The entire reason that the plan that was released this summer includes, for example, prevention, intervention, rehabilitation, and reentry, is that those are the buckets that capture that work. Now, as I mentioned, we are more than happy to come back at the work session to talk explicitly about the different ways that those agencies are doing that work. And I hope that you'll see in the reports that much of that is already included, but we are more than happy to talk explicitly about that. But, you know, we do not have explicit measures, metrics for those agencies that we're reporting on.
So, that is actually my point. If they aren't being held accountable for it, then it doesn't exist. Agencies work towards what they're being held accountable for. You guys are holding the Police Commissioner directly accountable for homicides, shootings, consent decree, all of that. You hold the Department of Public Works accountable for if they pick up trash and if they send out correct water bills, which I hope they're failing at based on their record on that. If we are not saying to the agencies, this is how we're holding you accountable, this is what we're measuring you in this crime fight, then they're not in the fight. They're just doing something. So, also, can you tell me how they're coordinating right now? How is every day, how is the Health Department coordinating with Commissioner Harrison? How is he coordinating with Housing? We know that the Violence Reduction Initiative has been changed and taken away. Tell us how that's happening each and every day, because what we see now that it's gone, now that is, we don't see that, and we don't see the coordination. When I talk to employees in Public Works, or Health, or Housing, they don't seem to believe that they're part of the crime fight. And I think that that is a top-down thing. They have to be held accountable for it. Where Commissioner Harrison came from, they had NOLA for Life, where they built this program for every agency. He didn't have to do that as the Superintendent of New Orleans Police Department. That was done by the administration so that every single agency here knew that they, just like the police leader, would be held accountable. And this is what we're going, listen, we're going to pass this legislation one way or another, because we have to have coordinated efforts each and every day. We can't say in July that this is coming. We didn't, no one misheard what was said. We heard exactly what we thought we'd heard, because we've been in this situation before. And what's happening on the streets of Baltimore right now is a direct result of the failed leadership of the past administration to not do what we're discussing today, to not have a plan of how we're going to move towards reducing violence in Baltimore from every single agency. Again, the police leader in Baltimore cannot and should not be responsible for telling the other agencies how they're going to help in the crime fight.
So, a lot to respond to there. I'm going to try and go point by point to respond to your questions and to your points. First, I would say, while metrics laid out in a plan is one way to hold an agency accountable, we have several mechanisms through which we hold agencies accountable. The City Stat Office, our annual budgeting process. There are a lot of ways that we do that. We also have individual managers, and we have deputy chiefs in the mayor's office, to whom the Mayor Young has made it explicitly clear to each of us that we, this is a top priority, and that our agencies are to be fully engaged in crime reduction in the city of Baltimore and in co-creating public safety. You asked for examples of how this happens, and that's a great question. It's something that actually we, I really am actually pretty grateful for the opportunity to be more transparent about how this collaboration happens. I can tell you, just a few weeks ago, in a police stat meeting, we were reviewing one area of the city where there is an extremely high level of crime. It's gone on for decades. And, you know, to your point, we can't keep coming back and saying, Police Department, what are you doing? Police Department, what are you doing? You know, we've been tracking how they're engaging. They're meeting every mark. They're, you know, they're doing what, they're a piece of the puzzle. And so, our question back to them was, how else can we be helpful? And they gave us very concrete examples of, we would like to see X agency do this. And that then falls on the deputy chiefs and the other folks in the room to ensure that those agencies follow through on that. But again, more than happy to kind of talk more, to be more open and transparent about that collaboration. I know a lot of times we get caught up in the day-to-day operations of city government, and so it's very important that we're open about that. One final point I'll make, you mentioned the Violence Reduction Initiative. Much of that infrastructure does still exist. We are actually currently in the process right now of assessing the pieces of that, you know, the pieces of that strategy that were most effective, those that were overly burdensome, and we will be continuing to work in that vein. And again, happy to, I welcome the input and participation of the council in that process, and happy to report back on that as well.
I got one last question, and I'm sorry, Ms. Chan, I know we're going to have a work session, so I'm going to shut up after this. And I guess this is really, really for Commissioner Harrison, but you may be able to answer. I want to know that, since this is a comprehensive effort, did any of the other agencies provide input to the Police Commissioner when he was coming up with his plan?
I believe they did, sir. No?
I was in direct contact with the mayor and with the mayor's staff, and making sure that everything that went into the crime plan was something that we, as a city, number one, wanted to do, needed to do, and could actually do. And the vision that went forth to develop that crime plan was based off of, number one, hearing from the citizens when I first got to Baltimore on what they thought they needed, and then hearing from the members of the Police Department, and then understanding what's needed from this consent decree, and then knowing how to make sure we take a department from the Department of Low Performance to the Department of High Performance, delivering constitutional policing services, coming up to the 21st century in technology, enhancing our capacity, enhancing our human capacity and technological capacity, and professional development to develop more leaders in the police departments, but was always in constant contact with the mayor, who we talked to and who blessed this plan and approved it before we went public with it.
So, but none of the other agencies, we were not working with them, and they did not offer direct comment- not offer direct comment to you about the plan, correct?
There was consultation with the mayor's office of criminal justice, but not every city agency.
So, thank you, sir. That, we'll take that as a no. And Commissioner, just because you're here, and thank you for sending the Colonel to the earlier hearing. You know that the flow of illegal guns into Baltimore is something that you and I, we actually spoke about, assuming as you got here, and know that that's always going to remain a focus for me. But just know that to that vein, we're going to be looking even further to figure out how we can do more, how we can build better cases, how we can make those things, how we can take the fight to the people each and every day, what resources you need from us, what things do you need from us to take the fight to these people who are robbing our neighbors, who are shooting our women, our children, our fathers, our brothers, our sons, and what else we can do to help make the more urgency. If that means that we have to, as you know, something that I've been saying for years, start to respond to calls for service in a different way, then so be it. We have to stop the bleeding in Baltimore. We have to do that right now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So, just a quick question for you. So, first off, thank you for, not for the commissioner, for deputy chief of staff. So, first off, thank you for offering the quarterly reports that you guys, MOCJ, that you guys are sending to the governor's office. If you could also send that to the Public Safety Committee as well as the entire council.
Absolutely.
So, certainly, you know, in the spirit of collaboration, it's the first that I'm hearing that these quarterly reports are being sent to the governor. Certainly, they should be sent, they should be sent to the council as well.
Yeah, absolutely. We can absolutely share that.
Just to clarify, the, this was something that was mandated in the state budget bill last year, these reports. So, the mayor's office of criminal justice is sort of the coordinating agency for it, but we were asked with, test with, coming up with a series of metrics that we would hold ourselves accountable to and report quarterly to the, to the mayor, I'm sorry, the governor's office of crime control and prevention on those metrics and send those reports to the general assembly. But we absolutely are happy to come and share this with the council. And the initial report that sort of laid out what those metrics are was transmitted. I don't know the exact date off the top of my head, but sometime in mid-October. But we will absolutely get that to this committee and to the members of the council.
And we appreciate it. As the oversight body of the city, I mean, that is the one opportunity where we have to weigh in and also hold other agencies accountable for making those metrics, as we have been doing with the police department and they have been doing everything they said they would be doing from one hearing to another. We want to also be able to do the same thing as it pertains to any other efforts being made, as, you know, in public safety. So, that's on that piece. The second, the question I have also is, are you guys having those, last year, there was meetings every morning between all the agencies represented from every agency, and then there's a follow-up with a phone call in the afternoon to touch on certain hot-button items. Are those meetings still happening?
Sure. So, at this time, those meetings are not happening. We're currently doing an assessment to see what was the impact of, do we need to have that daily? Do we need to have that, you know, every other day? What the right fit is for that.
And when, and when you finish that assessment, and appreciate that, will you guys be willing to give the council some seats at the table so we can participate in those daily, weekly, monthly meetings, whatever they may be?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So, I would second that, and, you know, just so the public knows, like, the meetings that you're having on a daily basis are not only not open to the public, but also not open to the council. So, I very much believe you that the metrics are being tracked and sent to the governor's office, they're also not being sent to the council. And we, as the legislative branch of government, in both that role in an official capacity is outlined in the charter, but also the role that we play in communities, people expect us to know what's going on, to know what the plan is, and to not only have a voice in that process, but to be able to clearly articulate what every agency is doing. And if we're not at the table and the public's not at the table, then we are not able to clearly convey that to anybody. The intention of this bill is to not only hope and pray that at these morning meetings, everybody that needs to be at the table is going to be there, because we aren't. It also requires mandatory public input, which, as the current setup, there is no public input into the formulation of any of these plans, to be frank. There were, there were community meetings held, but there's nothing in the law as currently written that says this information needs to be, there needs to be public engagement and input before the creation of the plan, which is exactly what this bill does. It also requires the establishment of goals and priorities and standards for the reduction of crime and the improvement of the administration of justice in the city of Baltimore by not only the police department, but we have health, DHCD, public works, wrecking parks, DSS, DOT, fire, police, the school system, state's attorney's office, GOCAP, housing authority, mayor's office of family services, emergency management, homeless services and DGS. Now, obviously, or DJS, obviously, a number of these agencies are state agencies and can't be mandated, and I think we'll work through those provisions in the work session. However, I think the intention is pretty clear that there should be, the public wants more transparency on what we are doing about violence in Baltimore. And I haven't been to a single meeting where I've talked about the need for a public health perspective and a comprehensive approach that people in the room have said, "Councilman, you're wrong about that one." And so, I think that's where the importance of this is to shed further light on what is happening. So, people want to know how their taxpayers' dollars are being spent, how are agencies actually operating? And if we're doing that in a non-transparent process, as is currently being done, and I'm not just putting that on this particular administration, just to be clear, my understanding is for several administrations, the council was not invited into city stat meetings and other things. So, I'm not, you didn't create this problem, and I'm not trying to say that this is one that's new, but I think we have to, and I share the president's perspective in that if it's not written in the law, then any administration can roll anything back. And so, that's the importance of this, of what we're trying to move forward here. And I just want to make sure that that's clear for the folks in attendance, that this is what we're asking for, because these are the current barriers to access that we have as the council and that the public has as advocates.
Thank you so much, councilman. May I respond?
Sure.
Thank you so much, councilman. I do share your sense of urgency in terms of transparency. I mean what I say when I say that I welcome the opportunity to be more transparent about that. In terms of the document that's sent to the governor's office of crime control and prevention, while that is a public, technically a public document, we will be far more proactive in ensuring that that's, that that's being shared with the council and being shared with the public in terms of kind of the planning and thinking through how we're going to adapt the Violence Reduction Initiative and those daily calls. One of the first steps in our planning process, we met on this, I think, a week and a half ago, is to kind of have some public engagement, and I, again, welcome the council's input on the best way to do that. But yes, message received. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Coen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Madam Deputy. You know, just to sort of ground this in the concrete reality of why I think having this comprehensive approach is so critically important, and also why grounding it in public health and prevention is so important. I got a call today from an officer in my district about a crime that took place yesterday, stabbing near O'Donnell Heights. It was domestic-related. But in addition to the victim who sadly died and was killed, there's also a four-year-old child who witnessed the incident, who was there at the time, who had blood on his shoes as he left the house. And so, incidents like this one are unfortunately all too common where it's not just the victim, it's an entire family, an entire community that is traumatized. And the officer that called me this morning, you know, he was reaching out for help because he didn't know what to do. Obviously, there's a crime-law-and-order component. Someone that commits a murder needs to be arrested and dealt with by the criminal justice system. But we also know that often our police are the first responders when, in reality, they may not be the best equipped to deal with a four-year-old child who's just witnessed their parent being murdered. I also support the commissioner's crime plan. I've had really good conversations with him about the Trauma Responsive Care Act, which is some legislation that I've been working on and I'm grateful for the administration's support on as well. And I think that making sure all of us collectively across the city are trained in understanding both the science and the outcomes of trauma is critical. But I also think that as a city, we do need to approach it through a public health lens. We need to make sure that in addition to police, that clinicians are part of that first response team, because, you know, the thing that we know is for that child, the likelihood that he himself will be either a victim of or perpetrator of violence dramatically increases. He is much more likely to suffer long-term health outcomes, anxiety, depression, and then physical health outcomes. His academics, his ability to have safe, stable relationships will forever be altered from this day forward. And so, I think it's just absolutely critical that we be all in and that we not just leave it to our police department, because while they play a vital and important role in responding and arresting folks who commit acts of violence, they can't be the ones that are there for that child. And so, I just think, again, I think from the perspective of the council, this legislation is really important, and it's important that the plan include voices from throughout our city, throughout our agencies, but also throughout our city, and not just be centered in one agency.
Thank you, councilman, and I'm very sorry to hear about that incident in your district. This is far too common an occurrence in the city. The level of violence in the city is unacceptable. To your point, you know, I think one thing we are working to adopt throughout our agencies is being more thoughtful and, quite frankly, epidemiological in our approach to service delivery. Again, I think this is something that we welcome input on. I know, you know, I think about even in my work with the fire department and how they're deploying new and promising practices. They do that in looking at some of the social determinants of health and saying, "This is where, you know, this potential program may have the highest, the biggest impact." And I think, you know, adopting that lens across the board and being open and transparent about that is something that this administration is committed to, and your point is well-taken and something that will be reiterated again to each of the agencies. Again, we're happy to kind of share an update on that and to incorporate that into the upcoming work session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it? Okay, Commissioner Harrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for members of the committee and certainly to all of you here tonight. Certainly, right here in this very chamber, I delivered, delivered a presentation on the crime plan in its entirety, from the very beginning all the way to the end, covering all seven core components of crime, culture, capacity, compliance, community, connectivity, and then communication. And then, we talked about the focused deterrence model, which talks about prevention, intervention, enforcement, rehabilitation and reentry, which the city is right now building that capacity to have wraparound services to give people a pathway away from a life of crime. In addition to, for those who don't choose well, enforcement for them. So, we, you know, the model is, "We will help you if you let us, but we will stop you if you make us." And we're building that capacity to deliver those services so that we can reduce violence by minimizing people who become perpetrators and minimizing people who become victims by offering them pathways away, by treating the illnesses and all of the issues that are root causes of crime in the very first place. And so, you know, while we delivered that entire presentation to this entire body and to all the members of the council, you know, we are building the entire focused deterrence model, which is, and you read it in my plan, a comprehensive, multidisciplinary approach to dealing with violence reduction. And so, I welcome any questions you might have about that at this time, because, you know, we're not, I don't think it's pertinent to deliver another presentation over the entire crime plan at this moment.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. And no, you don't need to go through the crime plan, although I could probably say it in your words, because I've heard it many times from you and the community as well as other presentations you've given. So, thank you, and thank you for being here today. Anybody have any questions for the commissioner? Councilman Coen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Good evening, sir.
You know, I think there is clearly a sense of urgency in the public. We feel it every single day. You feel it every single day. Violence is just at an absolutely unacceptable level across Baltimore, and if you live here, which all of us do, you know that there is no one in our city who has not been touched. And so, I think some of the pressure that you are experiencing publicly and otherwise comes from a place of deep urgency. But I want to reiterate publicly that I appreciate the work that you are doing to try to improve functioning of your department. I feel like you've come here and embraced this city and have a difficult mission, but have taken it on with just a tremendous amount of heart and intelligence. And so, just want to reiterate publicly, please stick with it. I think this city has a way of, when folks get frustrated, and there is a frustration, they lash out, and it comes from a space of being hurt and often being traumatized. But I want you to know that the vast majority of folks out there that I listen to support your work, understand that there are no quick fixes, that we are dealing with decades and centuries of dysfunction and deep systemic injustice and problems and violence that is layered on top of all of it. So, I just want to say, please continue to do the work with that same sense of urgency that I've seen from you so far. Please continue to both reform and improve your department. And again, to reiterate the previous point, while I appreciate your support for the legislation that I've proposed around trauma and your commitment to having your officers be trained, I want to again state that I also think we need clinicians, we need folks in the health department, we need all sorts of other hands on deck. It cannot just be your police department that's expected to solve a mental health crisis. That's not a realistic expectation. But again, please continue to do the work.
First of all, thank you very much for that. And, you know, I want to give, give the men and women of the department a lot of the credit who are going out there executing every day, and we are getting better every single day. And I want to thank you, all of you, for your support. That's why I called it, councilmember, a comprehensive, multidisciplinary approach. It includes disciplines beyond policing, and thank you for that. I'm encouraged and I share the frustration of the people who live here, and I share the urgency, if not more than everybody, because I'm ultimately responsible for, and so I bear it on my shoulders. I wake up with it and I go to sleep with it every single night and every single morning. So, I understand the urgency, and though there are no quick fixes, we can get better and we can get better every single day, and that's what we want to demonstrate in a very transparent way and come and demonstrate that to you, who represent the people of Baltimore. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now go into public testimony. And before we do, as always, we'll give each person who signed up to testify two minutes to come up and address the committee. You are not able to address other people in the room or other members of other agencies that are here. You're here to testify before the Public Safety Committee, and we look forward to hearing from each and every person that signed up. When you hear the beeping, that means your time's up. So, if everybody can be respectful so that we can work through the list. The first person to sign in was Nicholas Machado.
That was for attendance, not for testimony.
Oh, you don't want to testify? Okay. Rico Danny? Rico Danny. Yeah, and we'll.
Hello?
We'll, we'll give you, we'll give you four minutes to be able to do the back and forth.
I'm president of Black Lives Matter and the deaf community. So, yesterday, I'm very, very upset, very upset from what I saw from the police department. My client is deaf and he texts me and he said there was no access to an interpreter. I said, "What?" And I asked the police. I said, "Do you have access to interpreters?" And they said, "No." They said, "Why don't you bring a fan, a friend or a family member to interpret for you?" I said, "You need to know the policy. You need to know the policy, the federal law. The federal law requires access. Please, give us equal access to communication for the deaf community." Oh, sorry. Please, that's all we're asking. It's the federal law and it requires this. It's not, "No, no, maybe, no." Please, that's all I'm asking. That's all we request. Every deaf client, every deaf client, they're the same. They must have equal access to communication for all people, period, with disabilities. I've been fighting for over 20 years for this and I'm going to continue to fight until people change. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Counsel, Mr. Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
That's unacceptable. Everyone should have access regardless. Commissioner, I just want to just reiterate the point made. Everyone needs to have access. I want to make sure you heard that loud and clear because no one, regardless of status or anything else, should not be able to communicate directly.
Well, I think we agree. That is unacceptable. As a matter of fact, right here in this chamber, last month, I believe before the Public Safety Committee, we had an opportunity to talk about that and he brought that to my attention. And I'm happy to see that he's here again tonight. And so those are things we are working on to implement and try to implement and find a way to bring the appropriate people in to train and/or hire people to make sure that everyone has the same access. So we're committed to that.
Okay. I would just say we need to fix that with the quickness.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Leo Barrows. Michael Jensen. Barbara Priester.
Good evening. I'm here because my grandson was killed during the ceasefire over West Baltimore last Saturday. And it's not true about a lot of these young men in the city because I was one of them out there one time selling drugs because I lived in Lawfare Projects, had lead paint poisoning, couldn't read, couldn't write. I'm on my 21st day of my sobriety. I'm still trying to work on getting my GED because I had low self-esteem because I was raped. A lot of things happened to me in my life. So I used to be out there on the corner with the little fellas. I know what a lot I'm going through. A lot of them ate my grandson when he was killed. My grandson was addicted to drugs. He was ADHD and ADD, you know, and they, they put him incarceration and there's more drugs in there than it is on the street. When he got shot when he was 15 years old, he had 25% of his intestines gone. So they let him out the hospital addicted to drugs. They also be addicting these kids with this medication in the school. I used to get high for my son Ripley. Ain't nothing but drugs. And he was trying to change. He was in Safe Street. He told my daughter he wanted to make up prayer. He just got his GED. He got a, he got a second baby, is a week old, a month and a week old today. He was on job training. So y'all gotta get out here and y'all gotta put yourself in their shoes and see what they go through. You got a lot of these older people out here. They know these little boys addicted. They manipulate their minds. They throw duffel bags full of money on the table, "Do me a favor." But when they do the favor, they the ones got to run with the, with that thing hanging over their heads. It's a chain of command. These kids, they, they, they doing all the things they can do. They finding ways and means and to get more drugs, how to get that monkey off their back. Like they say, "If you want to know, you better ask somebody." Because they not out here because they want to be out here. The jail system ain't no worse than, than no better than the street. You can go in there and get any kind of knife you want, everything in there except the gun, cell phones. They putting, they using these kids with, with, with mental health problems. Some of them schizophrenic, bipolar. I'm ADHD. I didn't finish school. These are the things that I could do. I can draw, I can, so I do a lot of things, but I don't have the opportunity to do it because I won't allow myself because I'm ashamed of what I don't know. These children out here need help. They crying for help.
Thank, thank you.
You know, we couldn't get no guns in public housing.
Sorry for your loss. And thank you for coming in to testify. Damon Walker. Velma Marshall. Thiru Vignoraja.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. So let's be honest, this is not a substantive discussion. This is a game of charades about who to blame for skyrocketing violence in Baltimore City. The city council president wants to blame the mayor. The mayor wants to blame the previous mayor. Everyone wants to point fingers and blame everyone else and no one wants to take responsibility. That is not leadership, that is politics, and the people of Baltimore are sick and tired of it. The city council president is not even here for, to hear public testimony on a piece of legislation that he believes is so important. And it's going to be embarrassing when we find out that he left for a political fundraiser because that is all you need to know about what's happening with respect to the fight against crime in Baltimore City. My name, as some of you will know, is Thiru Vignoraja and I'm a candidate for mayor. But I'm also a former federal and city prosecutor. I'm the deputy attorney general, former deputy attorney general for the state of Maryland. And I wrote to this committee asking for an opportunity to present a specific, concrete plan with 20 specific, concrete solutions that have never been done before here in Baltimore City that we could do tomorrow. 12 simultaneous wiretaps in the deadliest neighborhoods, automatic federal review of carjackings and gun cases, aerial surveillance with a warrant requirement, clearing the burglary crime scene backlog, diversion programs to apprenticeships and jobs for both juveniles and adult low-level offenders, forgiving outstanding debt of returning citizens, a college cadet program, automatic audits of police overtime over $10,000, opening Comstat to the public so we can hear how things are going. You are the Public Safety Committee. I know you care about this issue, but your plan right now is to plan for a plan next summer. A plan to make a plan is not a plan, it's politics and people are tired of it. Right now, the criminals are winning and you are proving to all of Baltimore that what we need right now is not another politician, but a prosecutor. Council Chair, if I can just tell you this, two people were killed yesterday in Baltimore. Two people were killed on Sunday. Three people were killed on Thursday. Another was killed on Friday. People are being slaughtered on the streets while you all debate who should call the ambulance. Our city faces the worst crime crisis in its history and you are fiddling while Rome is on fire. But we are not Rome.
All right.
Our fate, our fate is not preordained. We can fix this, but it requires all of you to lead. Thank you very much.
Rico Danny. Rico Danny. He, he, that's right, okay. So that concludes everyone who signed in. Is there anybody else who would like to come up and speak? Sure, just please state your name for the record and we'll add you to the, to the list.
I'm Wesley Hawkins. A lot of y'all in here know me. I want to address the council and ask the question. How do we hold the agencies accountable if we're going to keep saying this holistic approach? And Baltimore, and I thank you for the plan that you're putting through, Councilman Zeke, about the trauma, because a lot of these kids are traumatized. And everybody sitting in here talking about a holistic approach or trauma that these kids are going through. What I want to know is the children that make it out of these traumas and the children that actually make it from the devastation that they live in in the city, what opportunities are we giving them? How are we letting them get equal opportunity jobs? Because a child and a man and a person that changed his entire life and dedicated to the city, they still not being allowed to work the jobs that people have every day. How do you take a person that does as much as he can for the community and Baltimore City? We need to look at these agencies and look at them deep. We talk about the consent decree. If you look at the consent decree team and look at the policy writers, almost none of them are from Baltimore. But we overlooking and we not looking that these people aren't from Baltimore, they not invested in our city. And the people that are invested in our city trying to make these things happen, they being shut out and their doors being closed on them. So my question to the council members is, how are we holding them accountable for who's actually getting these jobs, who have these positions, and how much community and youth engagement are they really doing? Don't sit up here and keep praising it if you're not going to evaluate it at a high level. I worked in it. I'm Wesley Hawkins, we can research it. I worked in youth and community engagement with BPD with the consent decree. I was told because of my lifestyle from when I was a child, of texts that I put out through the city, I could no longer work there. I want everybody in the city to know that I work on the ground level every day and I save kids' lives. Mothers call me crying. Grandmothers call me crying. I get out my bed 12 o'clock, 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock in the morning. This ain't no salary that I'm making. I'm gonna close out in a second, but I want y'all to look at it deeper because a lot of people that's working on this consent decree, they don't have no ties into the city. And the people who working on the ground level, they not been letting those doors. So before we praise something, please do your proper research. And I want everybody to look at what happened. Wesley Hawkins has a text. I speak all around the city. Everybody hear what I speak on. Everybody know what I've done in the city and everybody see the kids that I saved. I was forced to leave the department because things that I did as a child. Who judge somebody as a child? So before we praise, please look at what's really going on. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record, I'll sign you in.
Thank you. My name's Spencer Wyman. I just want to say that the reason we don't blame the gun companies for the violence in the city is the same reason that we don't blame Ford for every car accident that happens. City Council, we need to take some responsibility. The residents need to take responsibility. The politicians need to take responsibility. Until crime is under control, everyone in City Hall and the mayor shouldn't be allowed to do anything except focus on crime, not even anything else. You shouldn't even be allowed to do ceremonious ribbon cuttings until the murder rate is brought down. It's real disappointing to come to these meetings because every time I feel, I leave, I feel less safe. We're talking about crime like it's a health problem. Everyone here has been in their job for a long time. Four years ago, some of you were saying Baltimore is on the verge of a renaissance. We're on the verge of another disaster and until crime needs to be fixed, I don't think that you all should focus on anything else. Banning plastic bags, styrofoam cups, unisex bathrooms, that doesn't get anyone to move to Baltimore City and it doesn't help anyone feel safe.
Thank you.
Eric Randall, Concerned Resident. I go around and I speak to kids everywhere in the city, east, west, even though I'm from west, wherever it is. And I ask the kids, elementary school kids, middle kids, high school kids, "Are you proud to be from the city?" They don't even raise their hands. Talking about first graders that are coloring, learning about math problems, learning how to write sentences, put together constructive criticism, learning about teamwork, they're not even happy to be from this city. I think a lot of people mentioning here that we focus a lot on the politics, but what about the background noise? Are you proud to be from your city? When I wear this Be More Like Us everywhere, it's because I have a sense of pride. But sometimes it's hard to wake up and turn on the news. Some days, I don't even turn on the news. So I'm not coming at you from a political aspect. I'm coming at you from somebody that's in these streets every day trying to save lives, trying to tell these kids to believe in themselves, trying to tell these kids to care about the city that we're from. So like you said, while you arguing in the background, arguing in the forefront, point fingers, talk trash about each other, there's kids dying. There's three-years-old, three-year-olds that won't make it to see a fourth birthday. There are 18-years-old, 18-year-olds that graduated from prestigious high schools with honors that won't see their first day in college. So while we sit around and point out all the problems, what are the solutions in our own city?
Thank you. Anybody else like to come testify?
How's everybody doing to the committee? My name is James Lee. I come up here just to say one thing to our commissioner. Thank you. You walk my community with me. We talk, Kitten Avenue. I've been hearing the things you are doing. You're the first commissioner ever walked in our community before and I'm hearing you having little meetings in different communities, districts, and mine's just coming up. And I just want to say, thank you. Looking forward for the good things that's about to come. You gave us an eight-year plan. Each year, I know something's going to change in a positive way. It's not going to take exactly eight years. I think people think, oh, eight years, it's going to take eight years to do this. Each year, you're going to see something change. Rome wasn't built overnight. This started a long time ago. And I think that what you're going to do, we're going to see some good things happening. So to you, thank you.
Anybody else before we wrap up? Okay. So I want to thank everybody for joining us tonight. I want to thank all the agencies that are present here to discuss how we can all collectively take ownership of this issue and work together in driving down violent crime. We can't celebrate crime being down in almost every other category when we are experiencing daily shootings that overshadow a lot of the progress that's being made. And so as the long-term plans are being implemented, we're going to continue to focus on the crime in our city and coming together, having a robust discussion both at our upcoming work session, and if there's need for more sessions, we will do that. And the work session will be announced at a later council meeting. So thank you all. Meeting is adjourned. Ma'am? All right.